We on?
Yes.
Okay, I'll call the March 25th meeting of the City Council to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Okay, do we have a closed session report?
There's nothing to report from the closed session at this point, but it was not completed, and so I believe that the council will be journeying the closed session to the end of the meeting so that they can complete it.
Okay, thank you. All right, would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Gardner, followed by the invocation by Dr. John Huffman from St. Andrews Crest Church Church?
My pledge is to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we thank you for government. I realize often it is misunderstood, but how essential it is for our welfare at the local, state, national, and even those agencies that function at international level. Thank you for our leaders here, these councilmen and women who've been working this afternoon since 3:30, and I'm sure tired, and yet have to handle agendas with some ritual, some that are very happy items, some very complex items. And I thank you, Lord, for their efforts on our behalf, and pray that you will enable us to support those in leadership and to appreciate the tough decisions that have to be made, and to carry ourselves in a way as citizens that is civil in our conversation. So we give this evening the life of our community to you, and thank you for the many blessings we have living in this country, and particularly here in Newport Beach. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Huffman. We have two presentations tonight. The first one is the Newport Beach Library Foundation presentation of a check.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. It gives me great pleasure, once again, to present another check to the city. I am going to present it to our retiring librarian, who will be sorely missed. The check is for, what are we, $293,000, which is approximately, taking this and the last check, is close to a half million dollars in the last six months. Hopefully, we can keep giving, but the economy has taken a little bit out of our fundraising. But I want to thank all the people in the community that have supported us. I want to thank Linda Katsalais for all the support she has given this library during her tenure, and approximately one month from today will be her last day, and she'll be sorely missed. Anyway, thank you all. Mr. Mayor, would you like to join us?
Sure.
I'd like to take a brief moment again to thank the council for all of their support over the years. The library's certainly benefited. We have a wonderful foundation, without which we could not really do all the wonderful things we can do. And especially, I'd like to thank the community itself, who's been very generous to both our foundation and our friends. Thank you. You've got the library that you've given for, and we appreciate all your help.
Thank you, Linda, for the wonderful job you've done.
I'm always impressed when I see the size of those checks that the foundation presents us. Amazing. Okay, our next presentation is from the Rotary Club for Arbor Day. Mr. Hosfeld and Mr. Victor Curry.
Oh, Peter Smith.
Oh, Peter Smith, okay. Got the wrong person here.
That's all right. You want me to go? Okay. I'll talk then. Well, you know what this is for. I hope you all know what this is for, because you've got a letter in front of you. Bill Hosfeld is our community service director for Newport Harbor Rotary Club, and I'm the chairman of the Arbor Day -- we don't have a committee. I'm just the chairman of Arbor Day. And as I think all of you know, over the last 40 years, this is our 40th anniversary of celebrating Arbor Day through our club. And over those 40 years, we've given out now a total of somewhere around 93,000, 94,000 trees, still trees like this, to our third graders. And that's about 2,300 a year, which is quite a few kids. Obviously, they haven't all survived, or we wouldn't see much of Newport Beach anymore. But we've got various kinds of trees, sometimes little pine trees. This is the first time, I think, we've given the maiten tree, and this one is a, as you read on there, it's a native of Chile. We try to pick trees for the kids that educate them and teach them environmental consciousness, as well as just being pretty and something they can take home and grow. So we always try and choose trees that are water, what do you call it? I forget the jargon for it. Yeah, water tolerant. So this is a tree that, say, comes originally from Chile, Peru, and those places, and it grows in deserts down there. And although it looks like a weeping willow when it grows, it's fairly similar to a weeping willow when it's fully mature. It doesn't take anything like the water of a weeping willow. And in fact, it shouldn't be watered more than once every couple of weeks when it gets big. So hopefully, we'll come back in a couple of years and see how many of you manage to keep them. Probably a couple of months, about as good as I go with these trees. I get one of these trees every year, and I can't claim to be very successful in keeping the poor little things alive, but some of the kids are a lot better than us. And we've had, a few years ago, I think it was our 35th anniversary, we went out and we looked at the community, and we found some families that had generations of trees. And we found families that had three generations of trees. I remember one was a teacher who had a tree for herself when she was a kid, her daughter and her granddaughter, and they were all growing in the garden. And one of them was a pine that was about, I don't know, that must have been about 60, 80 feet high by that time. So they do survive. And one of the nicest things we get every year, and we got this one already from Harbor View, is we get a bunch of letters. I get a stack of letters, maybe about this high every year, from the kids that write to us and thank us for the trees and do their little pictures, and their comments that are sometimes quite amusing. I won't take my time reading out tonight, but we have a lot of fun with them there. We just thought that we'd let you participate and see what the kids do. Any of you guys had any of these trees when you were in third grade? Any kids that had these from your third graders?
Mine died.
Yeah. Well, I'm with you.
My kids brought home a, it was either a redwood or, at any rate, it grew in the backyard, and when the trunk got to be about like so, it was outliving its space, but it's now our maypole that we use every 10 years.
Great. Or even five years now. All right, well, appreciate your time, and yeah, we'll be doing it for another 40 years, I hope. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peter and Bill, for all the work you do for the community. It certainly is appreciated. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public. The city provides yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, Councilmember Hen?
I do have a few things. I was privileged to participate in the lifeguard tryouts a week ago Sunday by firing the gun. I did do that right. And it was a day of 52-degree water and about 30 mile an hour winds out of the west and a current, actually, out there by the pier that was about five knots. And yet, we had about 99 young men and women run into that water and swim what turned out to be about 1,000 yards. It was supposed to be about 700 yards. And anyway, it was a lot of fun, and I really appreciate it. It reminded me of the importance of the lifeguards and what we do for beach safety and for our communities. We had over 7 million visitors to our beaches last year, a lot of them Newport residents, but obviously from many, many other areas. We had almost 4,000 ocean rescues where lifeguards had to get into the water and actually save someone, and then another 68,000 incidents where they did have to enter the water for one reason or another, for safety purposes. We've been very fortunate that our lifeguards actually have saved three or four lives in the last couple of weeks, and unfortunately, one got away as well. We did have a death near the Newport Pier. And so I'm reminded and want to remind everyone about how beautiful and wonderful it is to enjoy our beaches, but please, please, let's be safe. Let's follow the rules. The lifeguards are there to help when they need, but we should also be safe on our own. I also was able to participate, along with almost all my other councilmembers here, in the McFadden Square Memorial Groundbreaking. And I'm sounding like a broken record, but I'll say it again, there's still time for you and your family to be memorialized forever in the McFadden Square Memorial, and we'll be getting going with construction here. I didn't notice that we'd really done much this week, Steve, but I imagine it'll get going in earnest here very quickly.
It's all behind the scenes right now. Ran it getting together.
All right. Lastly, I would want to also raise people's awareness. This is, the month of April has been declared the Autism Awareness Month nationally. Autism, as you may be aware, is an affliction that is a deep and troublesome thing for not just the young people that are afflicted by it, but it's a burden for their families and all those around them. And I encourage everyone to participate to the extent they can in Autism Awareness Month, because it is an affliction that can be resolved and be helped a lot by understanding and acceptance. So I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Yes, something we discussed in our study session today. I would like to get a staff report in the near future on the status of their discussions, public works with Caltrans, beginning the process of talking about possible acquisition of the highway from Caltrans, as well as formation of a council-level committee to oversee that process.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim DeGel?
Yes, I attended probably the most, well, the most popular event, spring event, for our recreation department, and that's the Easter egg hunt at Benita Creek Park. And we had kids from the ages of 2 to 14 in age groups participate, and the youth council was in full force with the various booths and taking care of all the eggs. And we also had holiday crafts and carnival games. We had over 1,000 kids in attendance, and my job was to do the countdown. And a couple of years ago, they asked me to come by, and at that time, I had stood on the sidelines with the kids, and an eight-year-old decided it was time to go, and he said, "Go," and they stormed the field. So this time, learned my lesson and came to the center of the field, and things went more smoothly. So it was a great event, and certainly one of the most enjoyable ones for our spring season.
Okay. Councilmember Gardner?
Yes. We have new CEQA requirements on global warming that we need to establish, and we also have a lot of interest in our community on green building. So I'd like to have on the agenda next time a proposal for a task force made up of members from EQAC and also from the General Plan Implementation Committee. I understand there's several people with some expertise that would be interested. And let us, let this group work on some first drafts on these issues.
Okay. Councilmember Curry?
Nothing this week.
I have none.
Okay. Well, I just have, I have a couple. One was on March 13th, I attended a luncheon at Corona Del Mar High School that honored veterans, mostly from World War II, who took part in the school's living history project. And I presented a letter of commendation from the city council to their advisor Denise Wyland, as well as the students. And about 360 sophomores conducted interviews, they did research, they wrote reports, and created a DVD of the 92 veterans they talked to, copies of which were presented to each veteran. As one student said, and I thought this was an interesting quote, he said, "I got to learn about things they don't teach in history books and really put a personal perspective on the stuff that they do," referring to the veterans. It was held at the small gym in the high school. There was a lot of students there, veterans, teachers, parents, and community members. And there was about 60 of the 92 veterans that were interviewed who attended the luncheon. I was impressed by the respect and the camaraderie that these students showed towards the veterans. I also learned that every year, the Corona Del Mar High School students go to the Veterans Hospital in Long Beach to give Christmas presents to the veterans there. If anyone doubts the future of our younger generation, I think that attending something like this would certainly erase any of those doubts. And then the last thing is that I attended, along with most of the councilmembers, the police appreciation breakfast last week, which was a great annual event that we have in the city, and I presented firsthand evidence that even the mayor's not exempt from traffic tickets, so. And it was fixed. It was a fix-it ticket. I got this. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 19 and S-23, are considered by the council to be routine, and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay. Councilmember Gardner?
Yes. Steve, after this afternoon's discussion on the traffic, and you've got an indication that we'd like to be more aggressive, so do we need to pull that, or can we do what we think we might want to do within the confines of what we've got there?
Yeah, I think the best approach would be to move forward with the contracts, and then we'll do some amendments to those contracts. Get things rolling.
Number 14.
Okay. Councilmember Curry?
No items.
Councilmember Webb?
I'm going to abstain on item number 12, which is retiree medical benefits. I'm not sure that I necessarily need to, but hopefully, this program will allow the council to more generously look at retiree medical benefits and perhaps increase them since they're woefully inadequate.
Councilmember Hen?
Nothing.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim DeGel?
No items to pull, but I did want to make a comment on number seven. The Newport Bay naturists have asked the city to accept donations on their behalf, and what they're doing is they're going to be raising funds to furnish the lab of the Back Bay Science Center. And I know Councilwoman Gardner helped with the workout and bring resolution to some of those design issues. So we look like we're going to have a good lab, and now, thanks to the naturists, they're going to go out and raise some money. And then, secondly, on that, those traffic items, I wanted to note that this is a priority of our city council, and we are moving forward with our master traffic signal plan, and we're looking to improve traffic flow, and so I look forward to those improvements. And it seems from our discussion, though, did you have adequate direction in terms of which ones the council were looking for?
I think we had a good feel. I guess the impression the council wants us to move forward quicker and add cameras and fibers as quick as possible.
Okay. I think specifically it would be to phases two and three, which is item 11. So if we could drop in some additional surveillance, that would be great. Okay, thank you.
On item number 19, the Panini Cafe appeal, if that goes back to the planning commission, does that come back to us, or does it have to be appealed to get back to the city council?
It doesn't automatically come back to the city council. It would go through another appeal process if there was a reason to appeal it.
So whatever action the planning commission would take, then someone would have to appeal it to get back to us?
Correct. It could be final at the planning commission stage.
Okay. Anything staff wants to pull?
Mr. Mayor, on item number three, kennels in West Hannah Heights, staff is asking that item be continued until the second council meeting in April. It's April the 22nd. And on item number four, I think we talked about you and me, Mr. Mayor, maybe trailing, pulling that item off of consent and trailing the discussion of the architectural committee to see if council wants to make any changes to the existing resolution.
Yes, thank you for that. Okay, anybody from the audience wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Dick Nichols from Corona Del Mar. I'm going to make some comments, and I'm going to ask for some to be pulled. In item number nine, which is Marina Park, I really would like to have on the screen, if possible, just the schematic of what it is. I'm very pleased to see that we are not cutting apart the American Legion. That's the largest in the world, and our guys deserve support in that, and I think it's good that we've left that relatively alone. I realize we've put some tennis courts over there, and I hope that they can be used for parking if they need them, but I basically am pleased. Item number 10 and 11, I would note that we did buy traffic control systems several times in the city, three times, I believe, so far. And maybe I'm wrong on that, maybe it's only twice, but we've messed around with those, and we really didn't get all the way. We never really did it right. So what I'm suggesting is, is that maybe we do do this in phases, and we get somebody within the city that understands that and can run it well as a job, and that we use him, because it's very important to have that, but I think we have to have it work okay. And I think the phasing that Steve had originally had merit in that we can make sure that we got the thing working right before we jump too far into it. And I would just like to see that done. I think it's a worthy project, and we need it, but I'd just like to see it done. Now, you can, okay. I have a number 11, number 13, I mean 12, is retiree medical program. I would just like to note on that, that's 56 million bucks.
Are you going to, making a speech here?
Well, my question is, is I can pull the items. I don't think we want to do that. I'm getting you off real easy here, so.
I'm not feeling the love, but go ahead.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm trying to give it to you. The retiree medical programs, I just want that $50 million. And that $50 million, we are going to put six up front, I guess. So that's six that's coming off the top of our budget, which I think we've extended pretty heavily in the area of buying new things and putting in new parks. And so my suggestion is, is just that we're going to have to look at the budget a little more, and I'm, I think we need to do that. The planning, the item number 13, the orange, I thought that was a good idea, and I'm just dropping that. The playground equipment on Begonia, I would, as an item 16, I think we ought to say what happened there. It's being replaced. Basically, I guess somebody set it afire. They found it to be arson. I'm pleased that we're following it up, but I think we need help of the community to make sure this kind of thing doesn't happen again. If somebody sees things being abused, we need to turn them in. And believe it or not, guys, that's done it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council for motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve items 1 to 19 and S-23, except for pull number 14. And then number four is going to trail so that we can specify the number of committee members. We're going to continue number three to April 22nd, which is the second regular meeting during April. Item 12, record an abstention for Webb. And on item 11, comments is noted adding additional surveillance to phases two and three.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilwoman Gardner?
Wait a minute. Number 14.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Whoa, going too fast here. Trying to make that record.
Yeah, well.
Okay, item number 14, which is the, get back to me, that's the authorization to contract with Van SCOYOIC, I don't know how to pronounce that, Associates Regarding the Advocacy for Upper Newport Bay and Lower Newport Bay Dredging. Councilman Curry?
No, it's Gardner.
Oh, Gardner, okay.
I had some conversations earlier today with people that have been involved in this, and involved in the discussions of funding for the upper bay. And the question came up, what, if this group, this Van SCOIC, if they are going to be focusing at all on the upper bay or primarily on the lower bay? Because the feeling was that on the upper bay, the contacts have all been made, and unless they had special entree and influence with the one missing congressman that doesn't leave an earmark, and so has been somewhat, not as helpful as he might have been, that there was a confusion as to what they brought to the table for the upper bay. So I guess my question is, are they going to focus primarily on the lower bay in those issues, or are they going to get involved in the upper bay, and what do they bring to the table in that respect?
Councilmember Gardner, and mayor and councilmembers, they're going to focus on both. The key thing they bring to the table for the upper bay is the possibility of reprogramming and different creative ways that we could look at other projects in other districts, even in other states that are on, sorry, that have not started yet have money budgeted that arguably could be pulled off, taken away from those projects, and moved over to the upper bay, especially during this critical time period. But you're correct, a lot of the same contacts that we would make, they would make in Congress, but in the Corps, this is, this firm's specific expertise is dealing with the Corps, because most of them come from the Corps.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Yeah, this is something I had spoken about with the city manager earlier today. We do have another dredging issue that needs to be addressed with the Corps, and that's the dredging of the canal behind Newport shores. And we've been working with them off and on for a couple, three years now, trying to come up with a program. It's actually much less expensive than anything else we're talking about, and it's something that they've acknowledged that they need to do, just haven't figured out how to get the money or the will to do it. It's a similar program. We've talked to them about potentially taking it over from them, once they've dredged it or passing it along to some conservancy or something else. So to the extent that we're paying a lobbyist to lobby people about dredging projects and the Army Corps, I think this is a dredging project with the Army Corps that could be added to the list, so might as well take advantage of the money that we're spending and see if we can get some movement on that as well.
Councilmember Rosansky, yes, that's something that we could talk with them about. It seems like a reasonable request, given their expertise.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from council on this item?
I'm into the action.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to comment? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we can do oral reports on city council committee activities. Councilmember Gardner?
At the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee meeting, we had a good discussion on artificial turf, and we will be coming back, I'm quite sure, with a recommendation that the council consider the use of artificial turf where it's appropriate. We also had a discussion about controlling runoff, particularly from private property. And we had, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Batum there, and we will be getting some more staff input on that for suggestions of programs that we can use that will help us control the runoff, and obviously, that would help water quality in the bay and ocean.
Okay, Councilman Curry?
No items to speak.
Councilman Webb?
None.
Councilman Hen?
None.
Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Dagel?
None.
Okay, and I have none. Our next item is public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, anybody who wished to address the council on anything not on the agenda? Wow, this is unusual. Take advantage of this and close that. Go on to the Planning Commission agenda and oral status report. Mr. Leppo?
Mayor and members of city council, several continued items. Last Thursday at the Planning Commission meeting, one was the Fury Rock and Roll Sushi Revocation Hearing, item, I should say, that was sent to an administrative hearing officer. We reported back to the Planning Commission that the hearing officer has not completed the hearing, so we will be reporting back with final findings for adoption by the Planning Commission on May eighth, with an intermediate report on the third, on success of a new security plan that the Planning Commission directed last month. Philippians Wine Tasting at the Center on Newport Coast Drive, excuse me, was continued. Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian, the master plan and related entitlements finally did receive a recommendation of approval that will be sent to the city council in the month of April. As we indicated in the report to city council, the issues largely were the noise and the new noise wall at Hoag we're building, as well as mitigation of the plume from the Co-Generation Plant. Seashore Village demolition of fifty-two units and construction of twenty-four new units at 5155 River Avenue again was considered, was continued, because we have some additional work to do on the mitigating declaration. And at the request of the applicant, revocation hearing for the use permit at Sejour at 3400 Via Lita was continued again till April 17th.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
Could you just briefly summarize the conditions that the Planning Commission imposed related to the noise and the plume?
I'm sorry, the noise on Hoag?
Noise on the Hoag, yes, excuse me.
Yes, there is, the sound wall is going to be constructed along the West Property Line that separates Hoag and primarily the West Hoag Drive and the service dock from the Philip Elbow Condominiums.
Is the property line where the trees are, or is that wall actually going to be between the trees and the residences?
The wall is going, if you've been out there, there's an existing chain link fence that's green. That's substantially where the new wall is going to be, because actually, particularly on the southern part of the property, 280 Cagney, the property line is out in the middle of the green space between Hoag Drive and the condo buildings. Hoag's property extends significantly west of the tree line.
Okay, but they're not going to put it on the property line there, are they?
They are not, no. They're going to keep it substantially where the chain link fence is.
And this wall is, how tall approximately?
From eighteen to approximately thirty feet, depending upon, you know, the grade changes from north to south, if slopes to the south. So it will take care of all the sound from the loading dock relative to 280 Cagney, the southernmost building there along West Hoag Drive, because those buildings will be fully shielded. It will extend on the northern building, which you can remember, 260 Cagney sits up much higher. The wall, sound wall, for example, the south end of that building will come just to below the floor level of the first habitable level, because you remember there's a parking garage underneath. So it will vary, though, from eighteen to, actually, I think it's twenty-five feet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Leppo? Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is item number twenty-one. It's the confirmation of appointments to the City Hall Design Committee. And there's a recommendation from the building committee, who interviewed twenty-four applicants for the position. We have a resolution that calls for four licensed architects and one licensed landscape architect to be appointed. The building committee has recommended eight applicants to be considered by the city council, and then also to appoint Larry Tucker as the non-voting chairman to the City Hall Design Committee. The building committee took a look at the qualifications of all of the people that submitted applications to the committee and tried to get a balance of potential appointees who had experience in design competitions, as well as good architectural and design experience, and also in dealing with construction documents and actual project implementation. And with those criteria in mind, we came up with the recommended list. You may notice, we only have one landscape architect on the list, and in the event that the landscape architect is not selected by the council, then there would be a need to amend the resolution, which is why we dragged item number four to this part of the agenda. I guess the one thing I should do is just ask if there's, if any member of the council wishes to add a name to this, if, add a name to this list. Okay, seeing no one, then, city clerk, do we have ballots to hand out?
I have a question. How many landscape architects have submitted applications, and how many did you interview?
Three.
Okay.
Three, and the, we interviewed two and selected one.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't realize you.
I didn't see the names.
I was going to vote for you two, if that's all right.
and Andrew Bowden. Councilmember Webb voted for George Bissell, Rush Hill, Walt Richardson, Stephen Sandland, Linda Taylor. One, you can only vote for four, sir. For four architects. No, it's five, okay, okay. Councilmember Rosansky voted for Jeff Gill, Rush Hill, Walt Richardson, Stephen Sandland, and Andrew Bowden. Councilmember Curry voted for George Bissell, Rush Hill, Stephen Sandland, Niall Sanders, and Andrew Bowden. Mayor Protem Dagel voted for Walt Richardson, Stephen Sandland, Niall Sanders, Linda Taylor, and Andrew Bowden. Councilmember Gardner voted for Rush Hill, Walt Richardson, Stephen Sandland, Niall Sanders, and Andrew Bowden. And Mayor Selich. Put it on twice. She put it on twice. Rosansky's on twice. Yeah, I was wondering myself. Rush Hill, no, you didn't do it twice. Walt Richardson, Stephen Sandland, Linda Taylor, and Andrew Bowden. I got two for George Bissell, one for Jeff Gill, six for Rush Hill, six for Walt Richardson, seven for Stephen Sandland, three for Niall Sanders, three for Linda, four for Linda Taylor, and six for Andrew Bowden. So the top four architects would be Rush Hill, Walt Richardson, Stephen Sandland, and Linda Taylor, and then the six votes for Andrew Bowden.
Okay, I'll ask, is there, I guess at this time, any public comment on these nominations?
Thank you.
Seeing no one, then I would entertain a motion to appoint Larry Tucker as the non-voting chairman, Rush Hill, Walt Richardson, Stephen Sandland, Linda Taylor, and Andrew Bowden to the committee and table the consent calendar item number four.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody that was appointed to the committee, you can expect a call or contact from Chairman Tucker probably tomorrow morning.
Before we move on, it's, I know it's customary at this time, but it was really true that we had, what, twenty-five applicants?
Yes.
And I'd say virtually every one of them would have been suitable for this committee, and especially the final list here. I mean, I think we discussed it ourselves, and we said, is there anybody here, if they didn't make the committee, or did make the committee, that you wouldn't want? And we all agreed that they were a fine crop of people that wanted to serve the city, and it's just amazing that we had that many come in such a short amount of time, so.
Yeah, it was extraordinary. We got the twenty-five applications in six days, I believe.
Yeah, and it's amazing the depth of quality people that we have in this community.
Yeah, well, I would second what you said, Councilman Rosansky, that there's, every one of those persons that submitted an application was well qualified. Okay, on to current business, council review of staff status progress report on six of the city council priorities for 2008.
Mr. Mayor, this is something that we are going to be doing as staff at the second meeting of each month through the end of the year. Since council in January decided on their twelve priorities, we're going to look at the status reports of six of them every other month. So the first one to look at is move forward with the planning, processing, and construction of a new city hall. You can see the steps there that have been accomplished. One that would be upcoming would be staff update with city hall needs assessment review with staff, so we'll be looking at bringing that to you at the next meeting. Council just talked about the process of architects to be selected, and the architects that were appointed to this committee will be a part of that process in terms of a design competition. So we're anticipating that an architect will be selected somewhere in the November/December timeframe, and that's basically where we are with the status report on those steps.
Okay, any questions of the city manager? Anybody from the public wish to address the council on the city council priorities progress report? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there a need to take action on this?
No, there isn't.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, is there any motions for reconsiderations? Okay, we're going to adjourn to closed session, but before we do, I would like to adjourn formally the council meeting tonight in the memory of Bob Pettit, who passed away on March 13th peacefully at home, surrounded by his family, including his best friend and wife of forty years, Dana. Bob and Dana resided on the Bellboa Peninsula for thirty-five years and enjoyed traveling together to Hawaii, New York, London, and Paris, but they loved their home on the El Street Park most of all. His great smile and love for his family, life, and dogs was legendary, and he will always be remembered. A memorial ceremony is planned for Bob at the El Street Park this Saturday, March 29th, at 1:00 p.m.